Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Salisbury City Council Legislative Sessions, September 14th, 2015. We have quite a crowd this evening. I'm sure everyone is here for a variety of reasons. No, just one? Okay, just one. So, we are going to, because we have such a crowd and because it's standing room only, try to move quickly through the first parts of our agenda. Just a couple of quick announcements first. Very first thing is your emergency exits are obviously all out of that door, but then we have two exits. One is off to the right when you get out that door down the stairwell, and the second is to the left past the elevator. There's another stairwell, so should we experience an emergency, you know your exits. Secondly, I'm going to ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it on silent or vibrate or turn it off. If you really have an important call you have to take, please do so out in the hallway rather than in the room. With that, I'm going to hand it over to the Reverend David Michaud, a rector from St. Peter's Episcopal Church for the city invocation, if you can make your way through the crowd. Welcome.
Thank you. I've got kind of a four-part prayer for our city, for our local officials, for young persons, because school's starting, and then for our public safety workers. So, let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. In God's name we pray.
Amen.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city, our mayor, the members of the city council, and others in positions of authority, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. God, our Father, you see your children growing up in an unsteady and confusing world. Show them that your ways give more life than the ways of the world, and that following you is better than chasing after selfish goals. Help them to take failure not as a measure of their worth, but as a chance for a new start. Give them strength to hold their faith in you and to keep alive their joy in your creation. In God's name we pray. Amen. Finally, God, our rock and our refuge, guard and bless all those who work to keep our community healthy and safe. Lend those who rise up by night or by day at our urgent call, give them courage, vigilance, and skill, and grant that they may always find your arm mighty to save. You are Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Michaud. All right, please join, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some special guests with us this evening for a community organization presentation, the Ladies of Lights of Hope, Shoulder to Shoulder to Fight Heroin Addiction in Wycomico County. I'm not sure who's going to be speaking. Okay, welcome. Please come up to the podium. Exactly, with all the purple shirts, I think you all have to come up.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us, and members that are here tonight. My name is Teresa Hufines. I'm a social worker and a mother and a co-facilitor for our group Shoulder to Shoulder to Beat Heroin Awareness in Wycomico County. Our group is collectively formed to combat the heroin addiction that's increasingly on the rise. It's beyond an epidemic. And so, we wanted to join together, unite our community into removing the stigma, providing resources, advocating for others, and just giving hope. This Wednesday evening, we will be holding our Lights of Hope. And Lights of Hope represents those in an active addiction, those in recovery, and those who have lost the battle. And so, we want to ask the community to please join us, unite together, and recognize those in our community that need help, and just come together as one. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to share?
Wednesday, what time of the week?
Wednesday evening, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. It'll be Wednesday evening at the Riverwalk in Salisbury next to the La Quinta Hotel, and it will begin promptly at 6:00 PM. And we'll have some speakers in the beginning, and that will follow by candle vigil. We will have some candles there, but you're welcome to bring your own. And they could be red, white, or black. If you know of a loved one, you could also bring posters or things in honor of a loved one that you may have lost or that you may be fighting the battle with.
We thank you for bringing attention to this important issue.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on a second. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the August 3rd, 2015 work session minutes, August 10th closed session minutes, and August 10th regular meeting minutes. Resolution number 2539, accepting state grant funds awarded through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention entitled Safe Streets MDSS in the amount of $208,000 under the Collaborative Supervision and Focused Enforcement Initiative. Resolution number 2540, accepting grant funding from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention under the Stop Gun Violence Reduction Grant Ceasefire Council Program, which is specifically intended to reduce gun-related crimes and target wanted offenders in the city of Salisbury. Resolution number 2541, allowing the Chief of Police to sign a memorandum of agreement between Wycomico County Circuit Court Adult Drug Treatment Program and the Salisbury Police Department, and accept grant funds from the Office of Problem-Solving Court's discretionary grant adult drug court program to provide overtime reimbursement to police officers conducting curfew and contract compliance checks on clients in the city of Salisbury. Resolution number 2542, declaring that Becker Morgan Group, Inc., is eligible to receive enterprise Zoom benefits for property located at 312 West Main Street in Salisbury. And resolution number 2543, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Maryland Broadband Cooperative, Inc., for the purpose of planning and constructing a fiber optic infrastructure in this city. And that would be it for the consent agenda.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
I think it's just worth pointing out a couple of things here. One, especially given what we just heard about heroin addiction and use in this community, to thank the state and the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention in particular for their continued support of our enforcement efforts. And also, I think it's worth noting that the partnership with Maryland Broadband Cooperative is an exciting one, given that it's going to lead to downtown Salisbury having one of the fastest internet connections in the country, 1 gigabit fiber to every doorstop in downtown Salisbury over the next three years. So, a pretty incredible partnership there with Maryland Broadband. Okay, now on to the next item. The next item is a public hearing for the Naylor Mill Road land donation to Wycomico County. And the way we're going to conduct this is we have, what we're going to need to do is first swear anyone in who wishes to speak. So, in a moment, I'm going to ask everyone who wishes to speak at any point this evening on this topic to rise, raise your right hand, and the city clerk, Kim Nichols, is going to swear you in. That's prerequisite to then coming up and talking. So, we'll go through that exercise in just a moment. I'm also going to ask that, based on our rules, everyone keep their remarks to three minutes or less, and that we try as best as we can to not be repetitive. But if you still want to come up, and you still want to be heard, and you still want to say, you know, "I agree with what's been said," or "I would like to reiterate the points of so-and-so," that's absolutely fine. We're just trying to be respectful of everyone's time here, if at all possible. So, with that, Ms. Nichols, would you swear in anyone who wishes to speak?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may sit.
Okay. Now, I do have some forms. I'm happy to go through some of these forms, but I am pretty confident that we didn't capture everyone who wished to speak who just stood up. So, with that, I'm just going to go through these as we receive them, and then we can invite anyone up who wishes to speak after that. And apologies to anyone who, if I mess up your name. First, I have Alex Boobis.
I can apologize for all sorts of things.
Thank you very much. Many of you here probably know who I am. I used to own Zia's Italian Grill, and was one of the original founding members of the Local Owner Restaurant Association. This project at the Henry Parker Complex is very important economic impact to this community. Economic development is important, but tourism is extremely important. We bring a lot of money every year into this community from people that live somewhere outside of this community. It's new dollars coming in. It's very important. I read with interest Susan Kemfor's article in the editorial page the other day, and she has a lot of very valid points. But I gotta take exception with a couple of things. One thing she mentioned was that, what if we go ahead and expand the ball field, and then we lose the teams anyway? That's not the way business people look at things. What if we don't build it, and we lose the teams because we're no longer able to service them? That's the big issue. Every time we have an event in this community, whether it be the pool show at the civic center, baseball, wrestling, basketball tournaments, whatever, the kick to the hotels and to the restaurants is enormous. It just is enormous. In a very, very trying economy, it's vitally important. Now, a lot of the restaurant owners, I call it many of them, weren't able to attend tonight. And I'm no longer in the restaurant business, but I'm trying to represent their position, because a lot of them are hurting. They've had managers go, they're working their businesses, 6 o'clock is their dinner hour, and they couldn't get away. So, I'm here in their stead to let you know that this project, if it should happen to go through, I think would have a huge economic impact on this entire community. And those dollars that come in, as I said, come in from other parts of the country. We're not just respending our own money. And that's huge, because once it's spent in this community, then it's respent. Okay? So, I hope that the council will seriously consider that this is a worthy project that they should move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Trent Swanson.
Thank you. Good to see the mayor and the entire council here. Haven't seen this many people since my last birthday party, so it's good to be here. First of all, I am a citizen of the county. I am a father, and I'm an athlete. And I grew up on Delmarva. I graduated from Y High. And over the years, I've seen a lot of things get developed, a lot of things go through. What I haven't seen is more opportunities for us to be outside, to be outside in nature, to be outside walking with our families. We have very few opportunities to do that. And one of the very few places we have is Naylor Mill. And even though it's not as known as St. Pemberton Park, it should be, because I took my kids out there just last week. And when we walked around, I've got a five-year-old and a six-year-old. And the five-year-old, they're both boys, and I've got a young three-year-old girl. The five-year-old says to the six-year-old, "Hey, Lucas, come over here. Look what we have here. It's a dinosaur plant." And they look down at a fern tree, like a little fern plant. And I looked, "Yeah, it is." And they said, "Daddy, did dinosaurs eat these?" I said, "Yeah, they did." And then we started talking about it. It was an educational moment. And then last night, we were actually in the zoo, the trail drive by the zoo, and the same thing came up. They both said, "Hey, look at this. There's more dinosaur plants." And so, they had the opportunity to do that. So, as a father, I love the opportunity to be able to go out and do things with my family, where I'm not sitting on the sidelines, where I'm there with them, walking, where I'm not paying hundreds of dollars to get them into baseball tournaments or soccer tournaments, and where I can just go out as a family and feel closer to my wife and my kids. And for me, as a member of Delmarva, what attracts me to Delmarva, and what brought me back, I grew up here, and I was away for 10 years, and I got back here as soon as I could. Why? Because the things that make Delmarva wonderful are the oceans, the bay, the grasslands, the trees. And when we talk about, when we talk about the availability to bring economic benefits, we gotta think of things like the Seagull Sentry, which brings in thousands of people every year, and we don't have to destroy anything. We gotta think of things like what Cambridge did and brought in an Iron Man. What they have there is bringing in thousands of people. You can't even get a hotel. Try to get a hotel for October 3rd and 4th in either Salisbury or Cambridge, anywhere around there. Good luck. Now, when we get a tournament coming in, you're bringing in thousands of people, maybe once or twice a weekend. And if you go to Naylor Mill tomorrow, and if there's not a tournament, and you try to get on one of those softball fields, you can get fined $75. What I'm asking is to keep land like Naylor Mill for people like myself that want to get outside, that want to ride my mountain bike on there with my kids, that wants to run, because for me, the health of myself and my family is very important, and the health of the community. So, for me, I would love to have that, and I would love to not gamble on one year, but I'd love to gamble on keeping it for generations to come, not only for myself, but for my kids and my grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Next up, Mr. Donald Ross.
First thing that comes to mind is if you build it in another area of Salisbury, they will still come. Another thing that comes to mind is that, what does it say of us that we're even considering destroying that area for a ball field? There are other places for it to be. That forest that is there is old, and there's not very many places like that left. We need to see the value of that, as the gentleman before me did point out. And another thing that came to mind on the way over here is, well, instead of the county acquiring this piece of precious land, what if, what if the city were to try and acquire the ball, the sports complex, and allow that natural area to naturally expand and move the whole thing someplace else? That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Kate Patton?
Thank you. Kate Patton, I'm with the Lower Shore Land Trust. I would thank you, Mayor, President, Council, for being able to come here. We had been, this issue had been brought to our attention over the last few months, and we did a thorough review with the land trust and our stewardship committee and our staff as to the issues around the forest and the value of it, looking at the 35-acre complex as a forested area, and looking at the expansion of the ball fields into this area, and what kind of impacts that would have on the natural resources. When we took a thorough look, we were able to look at the buffer that's provided along the Leonard Mill Branch and Littleburn Branch, not only situated over the Paleo Channel, but the tributaries that lead into the already impaired North Prong, Wycomico River. And we also looked at the 100-year-old forest as the integral part of a highly-ranked green infrastructure hub, including palestrine wetlands. And it's within the Maryland Department of Natural Resources' targeted ecological area. That's right within that edge, that border to the city and county. It's also been recognized by the 2013 Wycomico County Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan, the Wycomico Green Infrastructure Report portion of that plan, and recognizes, and addresses landscape fragmentation, documents that this hub contained, contained in this forested parcel is very highly ranked. So, degrading that would be a concern in terms of the green infrastructure hub that exists. The public access that's currently provided allows for low-impact trails for walking and mountain biking, and I couldn't have said it any better than the gentleman before us. That was pretty exciting to hear, that people are really using it. I've seen people out there. Public access, or the deforestation also is a concern for parking that may threaten the long-term protection of Salisbury drinking water, possible glass and oil leaks from cars, increased runoff to our creeks, and the water quality degradation to the headwaters, as I mentioned before. Also, the recommendations from the 2014 Wycomico River Watershed Management Plan include protecting agricultural and forested areas, and work on the long-term protection and sustainable management practices. We further reviewed other Maryland jurisdictions in terms of city park areas that maybe were further protected. And our organization has looked at that, and if there is a way that the Lower Shore Land Trust could potentially work with the city, if it identifies that this is a property that you want to protect for future generations, then we'd be happy to work with you. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Melissa Wilson.
Hello, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Melissa Wilson. I attended Salisbury University. I have lived in Salisbury for 18 years. I currently live on Pinehurst Avenue with my husband, dog, and three children. My husband and I both work in Salisbury, and my children attend the local Catholic school. My family has a vested interest in the future of Salisbury. Although I am currently the vice president of Eastern Shore Running Club, I discovered the trails at Naylor Mill through a different local running club. There are many running clubs in Salisbury. I immediately fell in love with the trails there. Last year, my oldest daughter had lacrosse practice at Naylor Mill on the fields, and I often took the other two children hiking during her practice. They have since also grown to love going there to run and explore the trails. I hope the council will consider not making the donation of the land to the county. The land has value as it is, and should remain the natural resource and protector of our drinking water that it currently is. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Knode. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Am I saying that right?
Kenode.
Kenode, I apologize. I gave a sound.
Well, unlike Trent, this is my first time public speaking, so after 65 years, I've managed to avoid. But here we go. Brian Kenode, I'm a facilities construction consultant in Salisbury, Maryland. Family roots here in Salisbury. Quantico go back to 1910. I'm semi-retired, work when I have to, work when I want to, enjoy fishing. Reason why I got into understanding what this issue was about, call it an issue, whatever you want to call it, was there was no accurate information in the media. Wherever the media is, excuse me. So, I made an email to Mark Kimmel, said, "Give me what you got. You know, I gotta understand this just for myself." You know, I've been trying to understand construction for 60-some years, and almost, almost got there. So, I looked at it, and I just want to touch on three things real quick. You know, when you stand outside a construction fence, and you say it looks easy, not quite that way for the contractors. You know, you're really not inside building widgets, and everything's the same. Everything's different. Along with that, it's subject to the weather, heavy rains, all those things, and land development can overwhelm soil controls. Dry weather causes dust. Dust gets on tree leaves. That's no good. Dust gets in the stream. It's another form of sediment. You know, and there's heavy equipment being used there, and always a danger of a hydraulic hose breaking, fuel leaks. I don't care how diligent and good contractors are. It's happened to me too many times on occasion over 45 years. It just happens. I like to fish, and so, I want to touch on the water and running into the streams. Once the fields are constructed, the quality of the water and the velocity of the water running into the stream changes. No matter how good a civil engineer is, as well-respected as Parker Associates is, I understand that things are going to change. The Fairfax Falls Church, Falls Church, Fairfax, excuse me, Wycomico County, I'm sure meets all applicable, applicable standards for that. But if a major hurricane comes, having been there before, those things get washed out. They just can't hold that capacity. It just happens. So, if we lose, I don't know what we're seeing here, how many acres we're losing. It's hard to understand on the scale I have. But let's say we're losing 17 acres of forested development. How many rain gardens is that? We got one rain garden down here, and more going on, and stormwater stuff, but 35 acres at the headwaters? That's precious. It's also, it's also a legacy, very much a legacy. I mean, I can sit here and tell you that I have a great-grandchildren. I want to have them go to Pemberton, see the family house from 1730, and be able to swim in that river. It's kind of, I'm greedy. I want them to do what I did. I don't think, I think this needs to be preserved. And I oppose any intrusion of Naylor Mill Forest as it currently exists. Real short here, World Series, right place, wrong, no, right idea, wrong place, excuse me. Naylor Mill Forest is the right idea in the right place. So, that's how I see it anyway, to the best of my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bach Patel?
City council members, Mr. Mayor, fellow citizens. My name is Bach Patel, and I own several hotels in Salisbury area. And I've been in this business for the last 15 years. It is very vital and important for tourism and a hotel survival, also for a local community job creation, and a county community quality of life. I would like to say a few things on behalf, and also in favor of land donations for this Henry Parker Athletic Complex. Based on my personal experience in Wycomico County hotel industry for the last 15 years, I cannot emphasize enough the paramount importance of the athletic events in generating business for the hotels' industries, and also for the jobs that supports local, local families. Area hotels are sustained largely due to the business that comes from the tourists. If it were not for the large number of tourists, of whom a large portion visit due to local athletic events, there would be no market for the hotels and motels in Salisbury, which also generates quite a bit of a property tax revenues for both county and the city as well. There would be no, the diligent efforts of the county council and the presence of the facility like the Henry Parker Athletic Complex allows local hotels to generate a large volume of revenue, which translates into a greater overall economic productivity for the county through more jobs, more spending, more investment, and more growth. The land donation by the city of Salisbury to expand the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex, therefore, will have a strong therefore will have a strong impact on the hotel industry. The expansion of these athletic complexes will undoubtedly attract more tourists and contribute to an increase in the hotel revenues and a room tax. While this expansion would certainly have a palpable impact on the hotel occupancy rates, the benefits of this expansion would not be limited to the hotel industry only. It would contribute to a significant economic growth for the county as a whole, generating increased profits for many other local businesses and increased tax revenues for the county. The benefit of this expansion, athletic, economic, social, and cultural are multifarious and should not be overlooked. In closing, I would like to offer my unrestricted support for the expansion of the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex on behalf of the local small businesses. Thank you for allowing to speak to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ann Webster.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been working in the hotel industry for about 15 and a half years, and I've been living in this area for 26 years, or 28 years. There's a couple points that I would like to point out. Some have been stated, but just to reinforce, it's said that this is a quality and a way of life for the Henry S. Parker Complex and then for these trails, but yet on the city's website, there's no mention of these trails at all. It points out that there's Pemberton Park. It points out that we have the city zoo, and it points out the downtown area. So if this is truly a quality of Salisbury, it would be listed somewhere somehow other than through private sectors. Job creation. I am sure everybody has heard through the news that our jobs are lacking in this area. We are above the national unemployment average, and I know Jen has got more figures for that. When it comes down to jobs, you have food insecurity, insecure families. And from the Food Bank listed on the website, we are at 15.5% are food insecure in Wycomico County according to the 2013, based on population, the third highest on the eastern shore of Maryland. So out of all the counties on the eastern shore of Maryland, we are the third highest. So with the job creations that we would have both in hotels, restaurants, retails, by going ahead and moving, if it's possible to move these trails, to other areas so that we have a hub, that would be extremely important. And it's important because if we don't act on this, we have potential of losing a tremendous amount. And just like Trent said, he takes his kids to the zoo, the hotels collect 1% of the zoo money. So that, take away that 1% of what the hotels collect on behalf of guests that are spending money in other areas, where's your quality of life? You're going to slowly slide down. Other areas are definitely building around. You look at Worcester County, you look going into Virginia, you look at other states. I was looking online as well to know about, you know, the trails and exactly what it has. Out of all of the review sites that are online, I only saw two people actually post a review of August 2015. Then you go to a few other sites, you have them back in 2013, 12, 10, and they're sporadic. So if these are well-used, people don't know about them. I've lived here. I knew nothing until all of this land donation came about. And I appreciate the opportunity and also look at our sports, the millions of dollars that it brings into the area, and just go from there. Thanks.
Let me start by saying I'm from a very rural area in New Jersey. I've been in Salisbury for about five years now, and I love it. One of the things that I love about it is the farmland. It's very rural. There's, there's a lot of biking, there's a lot of trails, and I do think that we need to preserve a lot of it. But I also see the part where Salisbury's unemployment is out of control. I am standing here today as the HMA President, which is the Hotel Motel Association. I'm also the General Manager of the Hampton Inn in Salisbury. And I do want to spit out some numbers and figures because I think they matter. 1% of the hotel's 6% occupancy tax goes to the city, which funds the Salisbury Zoo. 1% of the Wycomico, 1% of the tax goes to Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center Restoration Fund, and 4% goes to tourism. With that being said, this was a tax that was agreed upon from the hotels to give back to the community because we firmly believe that without giving back to our community that our businesses and employees won't survive. So I have to ask, we hear a lot of negatives, but what is the alternative? What is the community doing to benefit their employees, benefit their job market? The U-S-A World Series is huge. I hear a lot of negative vibes from it. There are a lot of people who complain about the driving and the trash and the people, but economically, it brings in, in fiscal year 15, it brought in $728,000 just in hotels. Think about your restaurants, think about your gas stations, think about your stores that they're shopping in. I know from talking to hoteliers that we look inside the rooms when we're cleaning and housekeeping, and there are bags from Dick's Sporting Goods and Charming Charlie's. They're spending a ton of money here. There were 1,200 teams that played at Henry Parker's hub. 207 of them could not play there because we couldn't house them. That's not to say what, what we could do if we expanded. In three years with the expansion, they're projecting that we could house over 1,700 Salisbury's unemployment rate is 7.4. That's an average. Wycomico County, 6.5. Maryland is 5.3. Salisbury is 2.3 higher than the national average. In 2011, 2012, and 2013, January ran 12% unemployment rate. The lowest point was 8.4, and that was in August. In 2014 and 2015, 10% was the highest, which was in January, and 7.3 was the lowest. My hotel has 54 employees right now. During the slower months of the year, we have to downsize. The income that we make during the prime season, the summer season, where we house these tournaments, carries us through the winter months. If each hotel, and there are 19 in Wycomico County, if each hotel had 20 employees, that would be 380 jobs. I increase seasonally 25%, and that would be an additional 95 jobs in the area. So I am absolutely reimbursing. And if I could just show the hotels and restaurants support, and if I could have everybody stand, there are a lot of people here in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Joan Malouf.
My name is Dr. Joan Malouf, and I've written two books about forests. One is about forest ecology of this area, and the other is about old-growth forests. And I now run a national organization called the Old Growth Forest Network. And what we do is try to make sure that each community has some older quality forest that their citizens can experience so they understand what the life form is on the very land where they live. So what was this very spot where we're sitting now? This was an ancient forest. And that forest cleaned the water, and it cleaned the air. And have nothing at all against sports teams and would love to see the unemployment rate go down, but I don't believe that taking away one of our very precious ancient forests is the way to do that. Now, I want to speak for the forest itself because the trees could not be here this evening. They are stuck in place. So I'm speaking for the tulip poplars, giant, tall, Virginia pines, American chestnut, very unusual, rare trees to have a few left. The dogwood, the red maple, loblawy pine, persimmon, American holly, sassafras, Atlantic white cedar, another very rare species because most of them have been removed. Northern red oak, southern red oak, sycamore, white oak, red cedar, water oak, mocha nut hickory, shortleaf pine, black oak. Those are the trees. And that's not even mentioning the shrubs, the herbaceous vegetation, the fungi, the insects, the reptiles and amphibians, the rare fish that are in that stream, and there are three. The community type is, in fact, even the whole community type is a rare species. The Atlantic white cedar riverine community is rare on a federal level. That's the lowlands. Then there's this hill that goes up, and you have the drier sandy uplands. Beautiful forests. So folks from the Hotel and Restaurant Association, I hope you will get to visit that forest someday if you haven't, and then you can direct your visitors to experience that as well. So what I would like to see is this forest be preserved for all time. Those trees that I just read the list of, nobody planted them, nobody waters them, nobody fertilizes them. They're doing their work for free, protecting our aquifer. So I would like to see this forest preserved, and I would love to see it entered into the Old Growth Forest Network as an exemplary community forest that Salisbury can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Granger. I run a certified public accounting firm in Salisbury. And as I listened to the arguments both for and against the proposed ballpark expansion, I realized everybody's right. And as an accountant, I really sympathize with the business people because they've got mortgage payments oftentimes on hotels, they've got payroll to make. I mean, it's a challenge. And the county, no question the county needs the money that this potentially is going to generate. From the standpoint of the trail runners and the people who like to get out into nature, myself included, I'd love to see this preserved. And as Joan Malouf pointed out, this is a forest that we're not going to replace if we cut it down. And I understand we're not talking about cutting it all down, but when I look at the proposed design, we are talking about significantly curtailing the amount of natural area. So you as a council, I really feel, feel for you. You've got a tough, tough decision to make. I mean, this is a very, very precious natural resource. When companies make a decision whether or not they're going to locate to a new area, they look at the amenities. They look at downtown Salisbury. They look at colleges, educational opportunities, the school systems. I think this is one of those amenities that if we let it go, we're not going to bring it back. We can't replace it. So I would urge you to find and to fund another area for the expansion of the ballfields. And that's all I have to say on the subject. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Tim Meeker.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to see you, members of the council, Mayor Irtin, and Mr. Stevenson. It's great to see you in that seat. I've not been here since you've been in that seat. It's great to see you there. I arrived on this soil in 1961, so I'm your product. And I just want to offer some, I just want to offer some perspective. You know, this whole relationship between Salisbury and Wycomico County, ay, 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 ay. I mean, if you're a resident of Salisbury, you're a resident of Wycomico County. You know, we're all in this together. And, you know, both governing bodies, you know, I would hope would think about that a little bit more and really more so to the other side. You know, we actually finally got something the county wants. Every other time the city of Salisbury... Well, it's true. Every other time the city of Salisbury wants something from the county, ooh, you know, it's an interesting response. So, you know, just kind of keep that in perspective. And, you know, I'm not going to bore people also with the history of the economic development in this county, the Salisbury-Wycomico economic development situation, you know, and the job situation. Our job situation is not because one softball tournament is or is not going to be larger or smaller. You know, it's been a long time in the making of a process of where we've gotten to where we are. And the other thing about economic development, the other thing as far as a business, you can turn that term business around, and you can talk about it as a resident, as people that invest in buying homes, as people also invest in renting, as people invest in being here for other reasons as well. So I thank the restaurant community. I thank the hotel motel community and the workers who are here and want to be here and work. But, you know, there's, we're all in this together, whether we live here, whether we go walk on a trail or not. But I would really urge you all, and like Mr. Granger said, you've got a tough decision, but, you know, this may be the time for once that the city of Salisbury had a different response to the Wycomico County. And I would also encourage everybody here, if you're a resident of Wycomico County, the other thing to kind of take a look at is a group called the Wycomico County Park and Recreation Commission. Because that body, I grew up here, I know what kind of recreation and park activities there used to be in this community and are not anymore. And so that body also regulates activities here. And so you may want to find out a little bit more about the commission, when they meet, and what they're doing, because the reason that that complex is not on the city's website, it's not a city facility. It's a Wycomico County facility. And so they have the domain over that at this point, and they want our land. It's just that simple. Thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Mr. Gabriel Mateko.
My name is, it's a little short. Just going to stay short, I think. Yeah, okay. I'm going to bend over. Gabriel Mateko, I live out in Sharp Town on the edge of Wycomico County. But I grew up here, was born here, I went to school at Bennett, before that Salisbury School. And I got inadvertently grouped with this Friends of the Forest Movement, which I never liked that name, but we have more teeth in that name, might, might sound. This is my first time that I've ever actually put in the effort towards any kind of political activism or really tried to go out there and do anything other than stay informed and get involved. And I like to say I'm pleasantly surprised at how, not necessarily easy, but the people of Salisbury and this area made it easy to get support behind this cause of saving the Naylor Mill Forest. You guys can't see out there, but there's a lot of people here. And they're not all here for, for that purpose. I understand that. You know, I don't hunt, but a lot of people here do. And, you know, it's obvious by how much camouflage is sold from Gainer Mountains Exploring Goods. But that's one way to enjoy the outdoors, and a lot of people do it. And I'm envious of the folks that have the time to do that because that's the main reason I don't do it, is I just don't have the time. But I enjoy the outdoors in other ways. I played three sports every season all through high school, only because, you know, my mom and dad said, you know, you got to stay busy, you got to go do something, you're not coming home. But I wish that they said, you know what, you don't have to play sports, you can go do something else. I also loved to mountain bike, surf, kite surf, run, hike, all those things. And those all happen outside. They all happen not on a field that is cut with a lawnmower and that requires a referee and a whole team of other people. Okay? I like going and doing things when I have the time and preferably outside by myself. And that's only because I don't expect everybody else to work around my schedule. And so, you know, and I've had the benefit of being able to travel a little bit and experiencing some of the more wild and natural places, not only in this country but in other countries as well. And to have even the smallest little sliver of that here in Salisbury, and then to have it disappear for something like... it disappear for something like this is, is a travesty. One of the things that I also want to say is that, when it comes to conservation and preservation, it is never the most cost-effective option, period, okay? It's not. You know, Yellowstone, I'm sure, has a lot of timber that somebody would love to have. I'm sure Yellowstone, or Olympic State Park, or the Shenandoah has tons of coal and oil that somebody would love to get their hands on, okay? Conservation is never, if you look at it from a dollar, dollar perspective, it just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't work out. Somebody's got to have the vision, somebody's got to appreciate it for more than what it is, okay? And I think that the key to conservation and preservation is access. And Naylor Mill provides that access. You park in the parking lot, you get out of your car, two steps and you're in the woods. Many people don't know that it's there, that's the truth. It's not advertised. But, you have to get out of your car, and you have to go there and visit it and walk to know that it's there. And you have to do that to know the benefit of what's there. And there's not, you cannot appreciate nature, and you won't, the youth want to get, gain the appreciation of nature by playing soccer, softball, baseball, and football. They actually have to have the opportunity, or they have to have somebody to introduce it to them. And there is no better place in Salisbury, close to Salisbury, on the eastern shore, I would, I would argue, when it comes to the forest environment or the biome than Naylor Mill. I'm going to keep it short. I am a business owner, expert house movers, we move and raise buildings. Ninety percent, maybe eighty-five percent of our business comes from residences. These are people that are working on their homes. I feel all of your pain, okay? No one was hit harder, no one, in 2008 through 2011, than the construction industry on the eastern shore, myself included. We had some hard times, okay? And we paid our employees out of the bank to keep them. And that's just the, that's just the way it is. When it comes to this deal, if the county cared enough, they would have come to us and had a dialogue. There's been no dialogue, there's been no conversation. Everybody's talked about a whole lot of theoreticals, and then, you know, after a push comes a shove, and thousands of emails, somebody's spoken up and said, well, this is why that's not as good of an idea, or this is why that's not going to work. But, it's after a whole lot of effort has been made to try and come up with a solution from the end of the folks that are trying to preserve the forest, okay? Not from the other side. All those fields that they want to preserve, okay? You could take the soccer fields, and you can make this a soccer complex. You could take those baseball fields, and you could make Winter Place Park a softball complex. It's already got the parking, it's already got the space, it almost has the number of fields that you need. Nobody's having a dialogue. That tells me the county really doesn't care that much, or they think that this is just a, you know, a burden hand. I'm going to say one more thing, and it might not be a perfect metaphor, but the last time that, and, you know, I've been away at college, and I've been away living in other places much like my friend Trent, but the last time I can remember that Salisbury got pushed into something that they didn't want to do was when the state wanted you guys to upgrade your sewer system. And that costed the city, I don't know what, sixty million dollars, and it's not over yet. Okay? That was an ill-informed decision that you guys were pressured into, not you guys, but the city was. And, I mean, I'm just afraid we're doing it all over again. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Ms. Jamie Heater?
Hello, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. I will keep it short. And I hope to bring a slightly different perspective than what we've heard. I would like to thank the council, and I also like to congratulate the friends of the Naylor Mill Forest for your recent efforts getting organized. I've received a lot of new information in the last couple days, and just weeks, just learning about this place, learning about this issue. But, I think I have a more subtler aspect that I'd like to just shine a light on, and I'd like to do that just through my personal story of learning about this issue over the recent months. When I first heard about this land donation and putting the sports complex in there, I thought, awesome! I definitely am aware of the economic impact that that would bring into the city of Salisbury, working with Wycomico County Tourism and Steve Miller for the U.S. AAA tournaments coming in here, I'm highly aware of that impact. Also, I was like, oh, that's why those roads look so nice out there, because it's just kind of like a road to nowhere. I figured it was thawed out, done deal, sounds good to me. I was not aware of the trails in the forest back there. So, then I started hearing about things about the Paleo Channel, I'm like, well, what's the Paleo Channel? I'm not from here, I'm originally from downtown Annapolis. Once I heard about that, though, I was pleased with what I heard, that city council president, Jake Day, the kind of the, the list of demands he had given the county after your last meeting, as far as some hydrology reports, some more experts, some layouts, you know, let's really look into this, let's look into some more details, and I was pleased with that, still in support of the deal. And it was then that I started to hear about the number of trails that were back there, and started to realize that there is another unused, unknown-about gem within the city of Salisbury that so many volunteers and citizens cling to and believe in as far as what they think should be a part of their city experience and their quality of life. And when it comes to things like keeping people here, getting SU graduates to choose to remain here, how you want to raise your kids, how you want to raise your family, there are certain things that I believe are important. And so, I started to shift. And those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Heater, and I also am the volunteer coordinator for Third Fridays in downtown Salisbury. And to me, this entire story right now feels a whole lot like that. And a bunch of volunteers got together and started using the arts to promote downtown Salisbury, and people said that, you know, people don't want to go to downtown Salisbury, no one's ever there. Well, sure enough, if you invited them, and you gave them a little push and showed them how it was done, they were there in the thousands. And I think that, while you guys definitely do have a very tough decision ahead of you, I do not envy you at all, I am confident that you could take whatever valuation you've put on that land because of what's going on now, and add a few zeros to the end of it. Because I think that this momentum and this, this could be an opportunity for the city of Salisbury to change the message. Now, I'm speaking from a marketing perspective. Because you really could take this opportunity to change the way that you view Salisbury, and what some of the resources and the amenities that you provide your citizens. And a commitment to preserving natural areas could be one of those things when people say, why do you live in Salisbury? Well, I say I live in Salisbury because it's close to the beach, a lot of times. And it also is indicative, indicative from what my volunteerism efforts are, because I want a downtown I can proud of, I want downtown I can be proud of, things like the zoo, things like that. And I had no idea those trails were there, and I can't wait to go. So, a lot of this is about marketing, communication, and what kind of place do you want to live in? So, that was my little subtlety.
Ms. Margaret Barnes? Ms. Margaret Barnes?
I'm going in.
Okay.
I was stuck. There's a big crowd out there. Hello, my name is Margaret Barnes, and I just bought a house in Salisbury. I'm actually from Annapolis, Maryland, where politics is a whole different animal there. So, anyway, I, I did not move here because you have baseball fields and softball fields. I moved here because it's a beautiful town with just lovely historic districts and a college, and is twenty-five minutes to the beach. You know, I, I think that, it's, it's funny to me that everyone's talking about tourism, and that baseball is going to solve tourism problem, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, we have something called an ocean twenty-five minutes away. It seems to me just a no-brainer that you would capitalize on that. And, you know, I'm thinking, why isn't there some sort of circular that goes from Salisbury to the beaches, or to Assateague, or anything like that? Like, why hasn't anyone come up with that idea? Like, that'd be, in fact, I've had to stay in hotels while we're closing on the house so my son can attend school here. And I've been talking to a lot of the guests at these hotels, they're not here for softball. They're here because they actually can pay a lot less by staying in Salisbury, and then driving out to Assateague Island and save money. So, you know, Salisbury could benefit greatly from expanding on an already existing idea. So, it just doesn't make sense to me that you would want to level thirty-five acres of forest for softball fields, especially when, you know, this is, there's a lot of fields in this county that, that don't have any trees, don't really have any, you know, available to you. A lot more fields here than, than back in, in Rundle County, where we've had our own debates about Crystal Spring and all this kind of stuff. Now, I am self-employed, I have an internet business. So, I know that you're trying to get people to come and start businesses, businesses in Salisbury. I'm one of those businesses. Luckily, I brought my job with me. I don't, I don't need to be employed by a hotelier who owns, I don't know how many hotels he said he owned, but I don't need to work for him. And I think most people would rather not have to work for, you know, I'm sure a lot of people would prefer to be self-employed, or prefer to have a little bit more variety than having to be subject to one single industry like the softball tournament. Now, I met, my neighbor is Mike Day, who is the economic development, he was the economic development head of Berlin. So, he had a lot to do with Berlin's growing status as the coolest town in America. And now, I think Snow Hill hired him, so now he's working there. So, we had a nice discussion today about that when I went around and met my neighbors. And he made a very good point, which is, if you are trying to, if you are trying to increase business for Salisbury through the softball tournament, as I understand it, and it's in conjunction with Ocean City, wouldn't it make more sense to, first of all, if you go where Naylor Mill is, it, it's limiting. You only have, you have, you, you know, you're talking about hotels and everything, wouldn't you have more time, or sorry, wouldn't you have more space if you developed in between Salisbury and Ocean City? You know, it seems to me that that would, that's a no-brainer, it's a logistic thing. The other thing is, I also am a member of Moms Across America. We talk, we are, we advocate for clean water, clean food. I have a seven-year-old. I think that compromising water quality is, you know, a case of fools rushing in. Once it's, once it's contaminated, it's contaminated. And the only way you find out if it's contaminated is if people start getting sick. So, I don't really know, you know, it's, it seems to me that finding an alternative would be a much better solution that everyone can sleep at night, you know, deciding on. I don't think that's, I think that you are pretty clever people. It seems to me there's got to be a more clever way of having softball and saving, you know, a forest which is paramount for our water quality, right?
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, sorry, I took so long.
This is Dr. Ernest Bond.
Good evening, everyone. Just, just a few quick things. There's been a lot said. First of all, I should say, my kids have grown up here for the past fifteen years, and we spend a lot of time out at the soccer fields. And the coolest thing about it was that after they got through a match, whether they win or lost, we were able to go out into the woods and tromp around, and they had more fun doing that, especially when they lost, than they did on the soccer fields. But, the main thing I wanted to say tonight, I was, I was speaking to a friend of mine, a colleague of mine, who's with the American Geoscience Institute this past summer, and he lives in Alexandria, Virginia. And he was talking about the eastern shore, because of course, he knows I live here. And he said, if there was one place in the U.S. that he would purchase land right now, it would be on the eastern shore of Maryland, in particular around Salisbury. And of course, I was thinking, yeah, he wants to have land here so he can go to the beach or something like that. But, he said, no, the reason was because there's such a huge quantity of fresh underground, underground water in this area. He said that the Geoscience Institute is predicting more and more droughts in the future of the U.S., and having that vast quantity of fresh water as we have around here is crucial to our future. And that this is a place where, if you're thinking about where a good place to live in the U.S. is, that Salisbury is on top of these huge deposits of water. And a good portion of that is coming through this area that we're talking about killing the old growth forest, which is helping keep that water fresh and keep that water available to us. So, I think that's an important thing to think about. We're thinking about the future of Salisbury. Of course, the future of our water source is vital for that future. And my kids love it here and want to continue living here, so I hope we'll keep that under consideration as we think about whether to make this deal or not. Thank you.
Mr. William Atkinson?
Hey, how's it going today? My name is Bill Atkinson. I'm in charge of Forest Baseball and also Fruitland Baseball. I work with the, with the Wycomico County and Tourism Department on bringing tournaments to Fruitland. Last year, we brought over seven hundred and ninety-five teams to Wycomico County. I hear everybody talking about softball, but we actually do baseball year-round. I do about fifteen, sixteen tournaments a year. That brings about one point eight to two million dollars' worth of revenue to Wycomico County. I also run a nonprofit organization called Fruitland Force, which gives kids opportunity to play baseball year-round for free. And right now, I have a hundred and seventy kids in my organization. I've been part of Little League for twenty years. I've been a member of, within Fruitland for twenty-six years. And I love the outdoors, just like everybody else does. But, right now, times are tough for a lot of people in Wycomico County, including my children and my, their parents, and a lot of kids, when you do baseball, you realize how, how, how little the kids have, and, and parents, and, and all-around, just people don't have that much when it comes to revenue. And right now, when I have a tournament, if I use Wycomico County, I use five employees from Wycomico County to, to work on the fields, to, to be a field director, to run the cafeteria, procession stands. Also, in the, in the city of Fruitland, when I have my tournaments there, I usually run about eighty teams, sixty, sixty to eighty teams, which takes about, about twenty fields, twenty-five fields. And a lot of times, I have to go outside of Wycomico County. I have to go to Snow Hill, I have to go to Princess Anne, sometimes Berlin, and, and on, to find baseball fields. So, we're losing all that revenue that should be coming to Wycomico County, is going to other, 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 other counties. And the money that is brought in, like I had a tournament this last weekend, it was a small one, I had like twenty-five teams, but it probably brought in, it probably, out of twenty-five teams, even if you had fifteen teams stay in a hotel, they're, they're, you know, it's a hundred dollars, just say a hundred dollars a night. You're talking about two nights, you're talking about ten kids per team, you're looking at thousands and thousands of dollars. And not just that, they have to eat, they go to restaurants, and then they also go to the gas stations. And they go, they have a flat tire, they're going to go to the, to the car shop. Or if they want to buy flowers, or they go to Sears, and they go to the mall, and they, sort of revenue for Wycomico County is huge. Now, I'm a, I love fishing. I go fishing all the time. Matter of fact, I'm going fishing this weekend, I'm in a tournament in the island. And I love the outdoors, nothing greater than the outdoors. But, this opportunity that we have to build baseball fields and bring revenue to Wycomico County, the tourism department already brings so much revenue that you guys don't even know. I've been working for them, working with them for about a year and a half and two years. I'm a hundred percent nonprofit. I've been working with these guys, and they're just amazing of how much revenue that you don't even know they bring to Wycomico County. And I heard somebody saying something about the tourism, and they really don't know what they do, well, just, just step back and actually look what they do, and it's amazing of how much money is brought to Wycomico County. And not just that, last year, I had over eleven thousand kids and families come and actually to Fruitland and Salisbury, and none of them really know about Fruitland or Salisbury. And now they do. And now they can pass that on, and, and, and we're actually, the name just... And now they can pass that on and, and, and we're actually, the name, just by using sports and tournaments, is getting a lot bigger, Wycomico County. Then they go to Ocean City, and then they tell their parents about Ocean City, or their friends and everything like that. Next thing you know, there's more money to Wycomico County. And at the end of the day, it's about, I mean, I know everybody wants, you know, you have Pemberton Park, and you have a lot of places where there's tons of forests and, and walking trails and everything like that. But right now, in Wycomico County, we need to build up revenue. And I'm in favor of the land donation to Wycomico County. So thank you guys very much.
Mr. Timothy Stock.
So everybody said they're going to be brief, I'm, I'm actually going to be brief. I've lived here, I've lived here for seven years, I love living in Salisbury. We go out to the Naylor Mill Forest every week, sometimes multiple times a week. My wife is a stay-at-home mom with two boys, and getting them out of the house is pretty crucial to her sanity. But the thing I want to touch on, because I agree with a lot of what was said here, I'm, I'm in support of maintaining the forest as it is. And the thing that just keeps hitting me over and over again as an image, and this was mentioned by one, the first speaker, is that sign on those ballfields that says, "No playing, $75 fine." If you put up a ballfield, you're taking land that people use, and you're talking about criminalizing even being on that, having fun, playing. And I'm, you know, sure, however many weeks a year it gets used to play softball, but it gets, currently, it's being used by people who live here. So I'm just saying, don't put up more signs, don't charge people for going out in the woods and having fun. Keep it as it is.
Okay, those were all the requests I had. So here's what we're going to do, because I don't think that was everyone, but it may be. From this, from the aisle over, is there anyone else who wished to speak? Okay. Start with Mr. Nichols, then you. And then we'll start working our way this way.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say out of the gate that Tim Nichols and Tony Nichols are not married. So before we are married off and ride off into the sunset together, let me go ahead and put that out there. This topic, you know, has, has valid arguments on both sides. I'm a, I run a business in Salisbury, I'm the current chairman of the board for the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. And ironically, it's not ironic, I guess, but I have friends in the room that I could point to on both sides of the issue. And I have clients in the room of both sides of the issue. If, if you're against what I'm getting ready to present, your, your rates just went down. But with, with that being said, I will be as, as quick as I possibly can and read through this as I correct grammatical errors on the fly. This letter was submitted to the council, you should have copies. Dear City Council, Wycomico County is lucky to have a complex such as the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex. It is not only a local attraction for many eastern shore residents, but a destination for many across the country. The vast majority of the communities across the United States do not enjoy the benefits of having a facility of this quality in their backyard. It goes without saying that we're lucky to have a forward-thinking Wycomico County Department of Recreation, Parks and Tourism. Events held at the Athletic Complex have generated $18 million in direct spending and has spent, that has, has been spent in area restaurants, hotels and retail establishments. The total economic impact generated by the events held at the Athletic Complex currently exceeds $29 million annually. With the expanded facility, those numbers project to increase dramatically over the next three years to $38 million in total economic estimated impact. There are few areas on the horizon that present this kind of potential economic impact. The growth and positive impact to the community hinges on the city and county completing the land transaction to allow for expansion. Concerning the protection and minimizing disturbance of the ecosystem, the county has indicated that it intends to over-manage by 25% the city's expectations of environmental concerns, including a well-cap integrity assurance not to contaminate the water supply that runs through this piece of property. Just like the city, the county has a vested interest in protecting this water supply. And to think that for a microsecond, that the county would even consider jeopardizing it, its own water, is just, is insane. According to a recent Wycomico tree canopy study, 90%, 96% of the land in Wycomico County is pervious, of which over 88% include tree canopy, grass and shrubs. Building the proposed athletic fields is the least disruptive use of the land. The chamber has reviewed this current complex impacts on the community, as well as the expansion projections of the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex, with the same three-pronged approach that it uses to evaluate everything that the chamber implements or lends support to. This approach is wrapped up in three questions. First, is it good for the chamber? Second, is it good for the community? And finally, is there a return on the investment? If we can answer yes to these three questions, we typically will move forward with action or support. It is the chamber's view that we can unequivocally answer yes to all of the aforementioned questions. With this in mind, the chamber supports the efforts to expand the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex. We urge you to move forward with this project as quickly as possible so that the event and economic growth are not delayed and opportunities are not lost. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Stanley Shuttaker. I moved here in 1989. And I was one of the six people to start in Seagull Sentry. So I'm, and I've also been on the tourism board for 12 years until they disbanded it, CBIS disbanded it a couple of years. So I'm all in favor of tourism. I'm used to really working with this group right here. But right now, I'm with my group. And the reason is, and my unique perspective is, I was bicycle club advisor at Salisbury University for 12 years when the Seagull Sentry started, and that was our fundraiser. I mean, our bicycle club started that, did it, and developed it. And all the riding and stuff on the eastern shore is on roads, practically. There's only like three places on the whole eastern shore you can mountain bike. And one's a city park, one's this field in Naylor Mill Woods, and then in Pokemoke Forest. The reason you can only mountain bike on that is that there's too much sand. You just can't ride a mountain bike in sand. You need a woods, you need the stuff to fall. So there's only a few places in, in the whole eastern shore that you can mountain bike, and that happens to be one of them. And I say, we, we did the trails at the zoo also, and there's some really good mountain bike riding over by the zoo, but nobody realizes it. And I say, we've been mountain biking over there for years and years, since 1989. So to say, we have a really valuable resource here. Now, everybody's saying, you guys have a tough decision. I don't see it as a tough decision. As they say, don't. You don't have to tear down 100-year-old trees to have what you're looking at. Very few choices are mutually exclusive. You know, you have to have one and have to have the other. I'm all for you guys getting your field, I know how much money you're bringing in on these things, but just don't tear down a forest to do it. And one of the ladies has spoken and said, we're, we can't house all the people here in Salisbury. We are working towards Ocean City and stuff. Pick something on 50, pick something that's not, that the fields are already there, you know, that you don't have to tear down a forest to do it. And someplace that isn't going to affect your aquifer. As I say, and somebody else that spoke tonight said, it's the right idea, it's just the wrong place. That's not where it should be done. Pursue it, find another place. I suggest somewhere on the 50th corridor, maybe Winter Park Place out that way a little bit, something that could tie us in. But I say, you just don't want to tear down a forest, and you don't want to discount the mountain biking that we already have. There's just so little on the eastern shore, and the parks, and then the trees and the stuff. And so you have an incredible resource there, so let's not ruin that resource, let's find another alternative. So I don't think it's that tough a choice for you, just find another alternative, keep looking, okay? And do it. Thank you.
My name is Chelsea Jones, I'm the guest service manager at the Hampton Inn in Salisbury. I do not have a speech plan, but sitting here and listening to everybody's story, I wanted to share with you guys, I am a farmer's wife, and I work very, very hard. I love the land, my family lives off the land, but we also need business in this area. When we hit that month of July and you guys talk about the softball players, you guys should see these children coming into this area. They love this area, they love Salisbury, they are such an enjoyment to have at our property. Yes, not always, not always. But it is a beautiful thing to watch these families come in and see what we have here. Can you guys imagine coming from a different town, and you walk in and you say, okay, well, today you're going to be playing here, but tomorrow you're going to be playing in Berlin, which is 30 minutes up the road? I can't tell you how many cars I had to hand out and say, here are directions to go to this field, or this, and this, and this. It makes it so much easier. As a mother, and I watch these parents come in with five and six children at a time, it would be so difficult for them. I think this will really make our area just strive and just get to where we want to be financially, build it, bring in revenue for all the businesses in the area, and it'll also show them what we have for the future. So say they come in July for a softball tournament, and then they come in August to go to the beach. You get the best of both worlds. There is Pemberton, which is absolutely beautiful. I have our pictures down there almost every year, it's a beautiful area, but I really think that we need this for Salisbury. Thank you, guys.
We got one more over here, and then we're going to start moving this way.
All right, hello. I'm Eric Liebgold, professor of biology at Salisbury University. Actually, my specialty is ecology, and I've been studying forest animals for over 20 years. And I also live in the county. I was actually at the Parker Complex, my son, bringing him to a soccer game on Saturday. So there's a personal but expert opinion that building the fields in this area will be a bad idea, and I'm happy to talk about this more with you all. But I teach ecology every semester, and habitat destruction is the single greatest environmental problem that's facing our planet, more than climate change, more than pollution. And so this is not only going to impact the forest, killing the plants and the animals, but it's also, I studied dispersals, so animal movement, so this is also going to affect animals that move, sorry, in other populations, so animal movement between populations. I study migrant birds, and so this is going to affect migrant birds elsewhere in the city, in the county, even in the country. And so it's real easy for us to kind of sit back at home and say, you know, we should prevent, you know, forest destruction in other parts of the world and tropical areas, but we have this really great old growth forest here. And I think that we should do the right thing and look for an alternate solution. Someone said, several people said, there's lots of fields in the county, I've seen lots of fields in this county. Someone said, you know, there's lots of grass and shrubs, when they were saying the wild areas. So those are the areas that we should probably be looking to, I guess, do the right thing in this particular case. So, and if you want to talk more about that and get my opinion, I'd be happy to talk about it. Thank you.
Good evening, I will make this quick, Mr. President, thank you. My name is Mike Dunn, I live in the city of Salisbury. Not a single person tonight has said a negative thing about the World Series or about softball. We are all in agreement of that. So I looked at my friend, the county council president, and my friend, a member of the county council, and my other friend, a member of the county council, and the chairman of the Salisbury Chamber, and the current mayor, and the next mayor, and I hear nothing but this is a wonderful opportunity. So go make it happen. If you take the free land out of the equation, isn't it still a great idea? So go make it happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, thank you for having this hearing tonight. My name's Rose McGregor, and I am a local cheerleader, I've been here for 10 years. I really love getting involved, I love Salisbury, I love the trails, I love the biking, I love the kayaking. It's flatland, it's, it's inexpensive to live here, it's, it's just a great place to be, and, and there's a lot of people that have a lot of pride for all the momentum towards good things that have happened here. And there's also a lot of people that have been here a long time, and they're really jaded about all the bad things that have already happened. And just don't make this one of those bad things that, that takes all this momentum and this positive energy and just rips it away. Because you're gonna, people want to be here right now, and that's a really good momentum to get more people to live here. There's a petition that over 600 people have signed just to say, find this, build your ballparks, but build them somewhere else, because you can't move a 150-year-old tree, you can't replace it by planting a new one. And this is not just about individual trees, but the whole, the whole system as a community, and that, that forest as a single intact being, and we want to keep it that way. Me and 600 other people. Thank you.
He walks further.
How you doing? Pete Roskovich, I'm on the tourism board, and I'm also a restaurant owner in town. And I can see it from all angles, I've ridden my mountain bike out there. Other side, my kids play lacrosse, and we go to areas, and like somebody mentioned, you have to drive up one park, then drive to another park. But the soccer complex in Gaithersburg has like 25 fields. How nice to show up in the morning, just play all your games at one field, not getting back in your car, driving to another facility, driving to another facility, driving to another facility. Talking on business-wise, on, this year on Thursday night, a group of 50 from a softball tournament coming to town, it's a great shot in the arm for us. Middle of summer, slow time for Salisbury, people go to the beach, and we get a group of 50. Then we have, the referees came from all the tournaments, three nights in a row in Banquet Lodge. We had Wednesdays for three different weeks in a row, we had different groups of refs, 80 guys, 80 guys, 80 guys. That was great for us. We've had just groups of six people come in, and we get to meet them. You know, they come in, they're playing in Fruitland, then they're heading back to the Naylor Mill, and they come in for lunch, and it's great, and we get to meet the people, meet them all. And some of them actually end up going to Salisbury State, we met them. And, you know, we came in with our kids, now we're going to Salisbury. So for me, I think this is the greatest thing that Salisbury can do, and I get the mountain bike thing, I get the forest, I get it. But if they can make this happen here and put it together in a timely fashion, it'll help drive economic growth in Salisbury, because there's not a lot of economic growth. And I hate to be all just business-oriented, but a lot of revenue, my mortgage, a lot of employees, a lot of taxes, this is vital for Salisbury. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barry Johansson with the Wycomico Environmental Trust, and I want to thank the council and Mr. Mayor for holding this hearing. And I want to thank Pete for making the best chicken wings I've ever eaten. They are just incredible. But I must disagree. I asked you to visit this forest. It's rare, it has topography you don't see in other places, many trees that are disappearing all over the country. The point is that there's other space available. It's not going to be necessary to go to Snow Hill and Ocean City to play a tournament for softball here. I understand that there's, already have been properties that are being looked at by the county. Once we remove this forest, it's gone. I mean, it's, it's gone for our children, it's gone for our grandchildren, and, and much too much of that has already occurred. Every county and city, I believe, has a comprehensive plan. And the water resource element of the comprehensive plan for this area says that that wellhead must be protected, it must be left undisturbed. And I don't, it's alarming to me that we're even having this discussion. I mean, there's, there's so little left. I've heard people say, there's forests all over the place. Well, they're, they're looking at a different community than I see, if, if they think there are forests all over the place. There are issues with our watershed for the Wycomico River. And I want to applaud, again, the city council for their hard work this past spring in terms of establishing a way to repair the infrastructure for our, for our sewage and for our wastewater, and preventing leaks which will more and more pollute our rivers and streams and eventually the bay. You know, it wasn't too many years ago, three or four, that there was a, it came to our attention that water was contaminated near Colburn Mill. And that was a 40-year-old accident. That was, at least that's my understanding, that there had been an industrial accident 40 years before that, and it took that long. I, I don't like to think about my grandchildren and their children discovering this long after I'm gone, that the water is no longer good. You talk about economic development, what are you going to do if, if there's a softball team that comes in and suddenly we can't even drink the water? You know, we're putting all our eggs in that one basket when you've got this beautiful resource that has You know, we're putting all our eggs in that one basket when you've got this beautiful resource that has recreational value, value for our watershed and our drinking water. I think it would be a tragedy if you vote, you know, if you vote to transfer this land and strongly oppose it. Thank you.
So when we talk about the economics of the situation, if the county sees this as a really big investment, why would they not be willing to invest in another piece of land if it's a guaranteed income stream? You know, why not buy land connected to Winter Place Park or another spot that already has fields that can be expanded? Similarly, when we talk about economics, we've had two people that have had great impacts on the vibe and spirit of Salisbury in the past few years very positively. Both come up and speak very well about a potential with green growth in Salisbury in ways. So Jamie Heater talking about the Third Friday, and she's a person who's had a great impact, and she sees this as great potential. And Third Friday's bringing a lot of business and a lot of energy into Salisbury. Similarly, with the Seagull Century, it brings in a lot of business and it brings in a lot of good energy. When we talk about Berlin and you see places that are being called the coolest towns and places you want to move to. If you're looking at these people who have had that impact, saying this space has a really good value and has a future, we should take that seriously. One, in terms of the business, that seems to, there's a good argument for that there. But then also, you look at the economic argument for the forest itself. It's been filtering our water for free, you know, the entire time our city has been existing. If you have contamination at the wellhead, it takes less than a minute for the water to be contaminated. That's high stakes, you know? And the amount of money you'd have to put into cleaning that up would be huge, and people would be really pissed off, you know? Look at the amount of people you've gotten into the room today. How many times have you guys seen this many people come to a city council meeting? Probably never, you know? This is bringing a lot of energy into this space, and, you know, that's not something to ignore. Why not feed off of this positive energy in, like, to educate the public about this space? You're right. It's not on the map. It should be. It is on the map for the people that know about it, you know? But why not Pemberton, we have Naylor Mill, and there's another forest that I'm gonna be really involved with that I just found out about, that is also possibly going to be developed, that's huge, right downtown in the city park that a lot of people don't know about as well. And it's fourteen acres downtown that you feel like you're in the middle of any huge national forest, but you're in downtown. It's accessible. It's free. You don't have to have a car. And I just, to make my last point, because it's three minutes, I've been away from Salisbury for ten years. I've lived many places across the world. I've met a lot of people. I've come back to Salisbury and been surprised to enjoy actually being here. I hated it when I grew up here. And now it's like you have things like Third Friday, you have things like Seagull Century, and you have this beautiful group of people that have alternative recreation that want to build on that. And when I had a friend of mine from Venezuela come visit, he was shocked when he saw that we had a city park the way that we do. When you're talking about smart city development and smart planning, you build in green spaces, because otherwise they get destroyed, you know? So keep the space and let's do some smart city planning. Thank you. And just lastly, my name's Neve Short, and I did the Friends of the Forest grape Facebook page, even though Gabe doesn't like the name. But I just felt that there was a need for a space for people to talk about it and look at what happened in a few weeks. You've gotten a lot of public interest, and so thanks.
Before you begin, I just want to let some of the folks know out in the hallway, we do have some seats available. So if you want to come in and try to find one, if you've been standing for a long time, we have a few seats.
Thank you. My name is Adam Dunn. I just graduated from Salisbury in May. I don't know if I'm any relation to Mike Dunn, who is already here. So the one huge word I've heard tonight is value. I want to bring the attention to the term intrinsic value. Intrinsic value means that a body or any existing thing kind of has something about it that has its own value before you have a knowledge of it or before you have an opinion of it, right? So this forest has had that value for a hundred and years and plus, right? So it's a huge example of stuff that's going to be on our doorstep, on a county and state and city level when it comes to actions against climate change or environmental degradation caused by humans in general. This is a huge example. And like the speaker just said before me, this is being talked about right now. Like, this is being blown up on social media, word of mouth, everywhere. So people have a knowledge of it. It's issue what is going against it for the preservation of the forest. And that is huge to begin with. So I just want to respond to one claim about, you know, tearing down the forest, is that the Berlin commute. To respond to that, it's, the perfect thing to say against that would be that if this is torn down, where are you going to go? Like, where are you gonna point your finger on a map and say, I'm gonna go to that forest? You could go to Pemberton, but it's definitely not the same. And I feel like now that so many more people know about Naylor Mill Forest, I really encourage them to go for those who have not been yet. It's just absolutely amazing. And you will feel that intrinsic value as soon as you get out there, and thank you so much for your time. It's been a long night.
Hi, my name's Maslin. I'm fifteen, and I go to Wycomico High School. I play softball at Naylor Mill, and I love softball. It's something I consider myself a part of. It's a team. It's a place I get to do it. Naylor Mill provides perfect amount of space, in my opinion. We know when you sign up for softball that we might have to drive somewhere else to play a game, which also is not convenient, no, but, you know, it's something you know you have to do. And if you care enough about softball and you care for your kids and their sports, then you drive there. Just what you do. However, I like water more than I like softball, and I think that... I don't want to turn on the sink one day and get sick, because then I can't play softball on the fields that we already have. And driving from Pemberton to Naylor Mill to experience different woods is also something you just have to do. Driving is something you have to do. Driving also to those places, you pay for gas, which is more money. You go in the convenience store, you pay for a drink, so you can, you get Gatorade, so you can drink. Something about, like, the job percentage rate being low, I don't know exactly what that means. However, I know that fourteen-year-olds and fifteen-year-olds get jobs every day who have never worked a day in their life, and then there's people who have had plenty of jobs, and they seem to find another job. And I drive around and I see now hiring. I see now hiring, and I see people on the streets. And I'm not saying that they're gonna definitely, like, get a job if they look, but I think to myself, you know, all they have to do is go in there and get a job. Anybody who doesn't have a job, if they care enough or need a job enough, they can walk in there and they can get a job. So I don't, I don't know. And I consider myself an environmentalist. I care about every single tree. But the issue is not about just the trees, although they're very important to the fact that we can breathe because of them. But it's about the water. It's about the land. It's about, I don't know how to word anything. Okay, hold up. Okay, and then I think about people, the construction workers, okay? There's rain. They can't work that day, because the wet land or the ground is wet. They can't build anything that day. Say there's a flood. That whole stream or river is gonna flood. They can't work that day. They can't work for another week. It's gonna snow in the winter. They can't work, you know? It's just more time being pushed back, that people will still have to use the fields that already exist and still have to drive around, so I don't know.
Hi, my name's Jessie. I wasn't expecting to talk today, but I kind of just felt this urge. I'm a senior. I'm actually in Dr. Lewis's class, and I am proud to be a part of the Salisbury community. I'm studying media production and environmental studies, so I can kind of see both sides of the spectrum here. But I chose to come to Salisbury above Towson and University of Maryland and UMBC because of the environment, not because of what they had to offer there. And I like this area, and I had no idea that Naylor Mill existed until it was brought to my attention. And now that I do, I intend to bring it to SU campus and make it known. And I'm also a photographer, so when I have my clients, I plan to go to that forest now and actually take pictures there. So I know it's not known now, but it will be. Promise.
Good evening. My name is Keith Henry. I'm a city resident, native of Salisbury. My family's been here for over three hundred years. I first want to address the economic issue. And I want to say a word that only Jamie Heater had mentioned, and it's the most important word here tonight. It's the Paleo Channel. I grew up on the baseball fields and softball fields, and Salisbury loved softball. And I think the tournament will go on, and softball will always thrive in this community. It always has thrived. And I would hope that the hotel and motel contingency that's here will continue to support this kind of tournament and the many other organizations that happen in this community. But to think that this site is the only site where this tournament can be held is not correct thinking. I don't see them as being mutually exclusive at all. This forest has been stated, has stated here many times tonight, has been here for eons. The aquifer that's below us has been here for eons, and it's in the council's, it's in the public interest of this community, and I would hope that the council would be responsible in their voting on this. This is a resource that is just not replaceable. And if we, we got to a point fifty, a hundred years from now, and we look back and said, well, all we wanted to have was, you know, a softball field, and all we wanted to have was, you know, a good Saturday afternoon with our children, you know, how are we gonna explain that to the coming generations? That we sacrificed the most dire and pure and necessary element that there is to all of us, and that's fresh, clean drinking water. If you have a friend in California, ask them. They think this is an important issue. And I'll close. I want to say one other thing. I'm a University of Maryland College Park graduate, business administration, and I want to address the economic issue. I think the tournament will go on. I think the county is going to grow, and I feel sure they're gonna build more ballfields. You know, it's a, it's a short-term economic boost, but we have to look at a much longer economic picture with this Paleo Channel. And what would be the cost that we lost this resource, if we contaminated this resource? It would be, you know, we'd all be ashamed to have been in this room and not have said more than we have said tonight. So with that, I implore the council to take the responsibility you've invested with, vote for the public interest, long-term view, save the Paleo Channel for all of us for the future.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Dean. I'm a Salisbury resident and homeowner. I am a cycling advocate and one of the founding members of the Eastern Shore chapter of the International Mountain Bicycling Association. We formed our group with one simple mandate, which was to advocate for trails in our area, because we view trails as corridors of discovery, in particular, free corridors of discovery. I have been studying our audience. I see a lot of white faces. We have been advocating to each individual member of the council for years to bring free recreation to this community, free opportunities. The fields cost money. Somebody made a brilliant observation that you get fined if you use those fields. You have to pay to join the tournament. There's an awful lot of people who now cannot use that property if they turn into fee-paying, fee-requiring facilities. A forest is multi-use. We can ride bikes there. We can walk there. We can go sit and look at birds for free. Anyone can go there. The reason they're not on the maps is because for ten years or more, our group, a group that precedes us, has been asking the city to acknowledge that these trails exist and allow us to take care of them for free. It took us three years of almost constant effort at the commission level, at the Parks Commission level and the city council level, to get permission from the city to voluntarily take care of the trails in City Park. Three years. We have finally won that. We have not even gotten to the point of signing and mapping these. What we would like to do is open these properties in terms of access, free access, to the community through volunteer effort. It's not a hard math. That's number one. Why don't we know about these properties? We haven't been allowed to tell you about them yet. Number two, the diversity issue. This community is in a moment. We're in a moment. We all know it. We have a moment to reach out and take people who are not like us, hand in hand, and go somewhere and make peace with each other. If we sell everything beautiful about our community, why would we want to live here? I don't care if it's seven hundred million dollars that this is gonna bring in. If we sell the beautiful things about our community, it's all gonna look like the North Corridor, and we can go anywhere in the world. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Perez. I work at UMS. I'll try to keep this brief. I'm gonna try to offer a little bit of an outsider's perspective. I've been here for almost ten years. I'm from northern Minnesota, where the headwaters of the Mississippi is. We have ten thousand lakes, more so, and tourism is a huge part of our livelihood. So when I came here, I saw a lot of parallels, a lot of ecotourism. A lot of people come here to enjoy the water. And I was shocked to see that where I'm from, there's probably four times as many city parks, trails, rails to trails, hiking, skiing, all this. So to me, it doesn't seem like we have a whole lot, and I think we should use all of our efforts to preserve that. So I would say that, you know, I heard someone say that, well, we have Pemberton Park, and Pemberton Park is beautiful, but Pemberton Park and the City Park, that's two things. That's not enough. That is just not enough. It's not good enough for me and my community, and I hope it's not good. and I hope it's not good enough for you."
President Cannon.
Vice President Mitchell, thank you. Council members, Mayor Irtan, how's everybody tonight? Thank you for having this, a lot of great discussion fled here that... I'm John Cannon, President of Wycomico County Council, I'll give you one guess as to what my position might be. I'm gonna read a couple of facts, I'm gonna try to keep this quick, I wanna read a couple of facts, I also wanna address a couple of issues that were expressed tonight, so that everyone understands the county's position in this. The county is trying to be very conscientious on what we're doing, believe me, we are taking a lot of measures, we've made a lot of concessions already as to try to how we wanna make this work for everybody. Couple of things I'd like to point out, and this is from the official engineering study. With this project in particular, these are the issues that need to be addressed. With consideration of this, for the state of Maryland, we have to worry about stormwater management, we have to worry about forest conservation, we have to worry about the Paleo Channel, and we have to worry about the sensitive streams that are bordering this property, that's our responsibility. It's also our obligation to the state of Maryland. The stormwater management, regarding the stormwater management, we're capturing enough runoff so that the runoff leaving the site is reduced to a level equivalent to a wooded site in good condition. This results in, the measurements that we are taking are resulting in a 60% increase over and above what is being required by law. That's 60% on stormwater management. The design captures nearly 100% of the site's runoff, and there is no increase in runoff or degradation to the existing stream. I'm sorry I read it, but I don't wanna miss anything. In reference to forest conservation, the forest conservation law of the state of Maryland provides very, very specific parameters. We are exceeding our forest conservation requirements by 25%. In reference to the Paleo Channel, if you evaluate the use of this park, you will probably find that this is the best use for a project that is to be located above the Paleo Channel. Furthermore, we will be tied into the city's water and sewer system, so that sewage flows will not be discharged into any groundwater whatsoever. And as far as an orderly stream is concerned, we're proposing a 100 to 500-foot wide stream buffer to consist of undisturbed existing mature woods, and this will preserve the vital habitat along this area. This is what Wycomico County is trying to do, just to make this project work. To try to address a couple of concerns specifically, and I had to write it down, and I'm gonna try to keep this as quick as possible. You have to understand that Wycomico County has great parks, and we have great parks 'cause we do a great job in maintaining our parks. We're very environmentally conscious, we have people on staff who are environmentalists, just like many of you in the room here, and that's what they do for a living. They try to make sure that we are making the best decisions for Wycomico County, for the city of Salisbury, and for all the citizens. We have a beautiful complex there right now, you have to keep one thing in mind, there's talk about going to the trails and visiting these trails, I'm not so sure the trails would've been there for you to visit if Wycomico County had not had the foresight to build the original ballpark, but we did. One other thing to consider, as I said before, it isn't just Wycomico County, it's the state of Maryland, it's the Maryland Department of the Environment, they're the ones that approved this project. They've already committed a million dollars towards this project, that's their confidence in what this will do. The county is matching that million dollars. There'll still be trees, there'll still be trails, there'll still be streams, there still will be a Paleo Channel. Wycomico County would never ask the city of Salisbury to take any steps, make any measures, that would compromise the Paleo Channel, as someone said here earlier. What happens to Wycomico County or the city of Salisbury if we compromise the Paleo Channel? We will not do that. The state of Maryland will not allow us to compromise the Paleo Channel. We've also already made concessions, if you look at the maps up here, where originally the ball fields were gonna be on the left side, we've moved those, the new proposal is gonna have soccer fields there, because we think that would be less invasive. If Wycomico County did not have the foresight to build the original Henry Parker complex, we wouldn't even have a softball league here. It wouldn't be there, there would be no trails. But luckily, we had the foresight, and it brought millions of dollars in revenue to Wycomico County, and it's allowed a lot of people in Wycomico County to play softball in those fields. It's been said, build these additional fields somewhere else, well, this sports group would not have come to Wycomico County if we hadn't had the foresight to build those four fields. Now keep this in mind, Delaware wants this sports team, New Jersey wants the sport team, Prince George's County wants this team, Virginia wants this United States Softball League. We have a ton of competition. They want, they will move to whatever's the most convenient for them, they don't have any allegiance to Wycomico County, so it is necessary to have these ball fields all together in the same area, or else these guys, they can pick up and they can go to Virginia, or they can go somewhere else, and they will do that. So that is important for it to be in that particular location. Not only would we lose the millions and millions of dollars that are expected to come into the county and to come into the city from the expansion, I understand, thank you, I'm trying to clarify issues for the people here. Not only would we lose the money that we are already bringing into the county, we would also lose the money that is already coming in today from the current sports events, because when they leave, we not only lose the future, we lose what we are making currently. To wrap it up, it had been mentioned that for once, the county wanted something that the city had. A little bit of history is that this property was acquired through Wycomico County, through project open space funding for the city of Salisbury. So we're trying to just urge the city to allow us to continue to work with the city. We think it's good for the environment, we think it's good for the economy, and we think it's good for the citizens of Wycomico County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Cannon.
These groups have no allegiance to Salisbury, to Wycomico County, I understand, they have no allegiance to Wycomico County. They will leave when some other group takes 20...
Mr. Dean, we can't, I can't take any other comments.
My name's Sam Gibson, and I'm here hopefully to just shed some common sense, the decision is basically just for you to donate the land or not, and that's beyond that, whether you wanna build the fields or not. I think the point is, I thought everything was well-covered until this gentleman got up and spoke. If you actually think that the city and the county does such a good job at stormwater management and wastewater treatment plants, go back and look at some of the papers where the Wycomico River was closed down because the wastewater treatment plant wasn't running, or the stormwater plants weren't, or the stormwater drains weren't running properly, that's a perfect example of how we can screw up as a government, how we can screw up as politics, and how we screw up with our planning. So I would just like to say, it's not a hard decision, make the right decision.
My name is Nicole Long, and I just wanna say that I believe that every single person in this room has a desire to do what is good, no matter what your point of view is. There was a wise person that once said to me, however, that the good is often the enemy of the best. My invitation to you who have the power to make this decision is to do what's best. Is it good for the chamber? Yes. Is it good for the community? I think that was a beautiful question. And in 2015, as intelligent persons who are aware of the state of the planet, we need to expand our concept of community, down to the microbes which are flourishing in a forest. So let's ask that question, and is it good for the community? And I say, probably if you take the natural world into consideration, the answer's gonna be no on that one. The last point is, you know, I couldn't go on the walk yesterday because I was in a room of 31 teenagers, working with them on the moral concept of reverence. And I might not have a popular position, and I apologize to the atheists in the room, but mine is a spiritual perspective. And I don't know if there are a lot of people in the room who would disagree, that being in the beauty of nature ignobles the human being. We do have few places here, I get exhausted from the work that I do, I give a lot of my heart out, and the only way I really make it is by being able to find solitude in these few places. So I hope that I haven't taxed your behind, sitting in your chairs, but thank you for letting me express that point of view.
Is there anyone in the hallway who I cannot see right now who would like to be heard?
Jake, we have one more down here.
I'm sorry?
We have one more down here.
I'm here because I was watching G-Pac 14. Gentlemen, I'd like to speak to you tonight about vision. Fifty-five years ago, on September the 25th, Brody McLaren, who was the mayor at that time, there was a commission formed, they met at St. Peter's Church, and Salisbury was integrated without riots. They did what was best for the community. Tom Parker, who was mayor of Salisbury, acquired a swampy piece of land at Winfield Snow Hill Road, out to Shoemaker Pond, and the powers that be at that time thought he was crazy. What in the world did you want that piece of land? Well, as it turned around, we had a depression, and Roosevelt saw that it was fit, that there was WPA and Work Progress Commission, and all those guys were put to work, and today we have benefited from this city park. After the Second World War, there were some men that come home from the, and they wanted to have a say in what a little village, and so they incorporated the city of Fruitland. Now you gotta understand, when we talk about the city of Fruitland, it was a, they called it Falktown. When Salisbury was known as Handy's Landing, big ships couldn't come up the Wycomico River, they had to stop at Shed Point, and everything was barged up the river. And it wasn't until the 1800s that the channel was deepened. But those town council in Fruitland, they met in a firehouse, and the town business was done in Oral Hobbs Kitchen, and it was still being done there in the 60s. And in the 60s, that was when George Miles and Buhr took care of the surge treatment plant there, they got their own water supply, and think about this, a young man spoke here about the park facilities that are in Fruitland. Those park facilities were all put in there by the city. Crown Croc and Seal was a big industry at that time in Fruitland, and now it's a place where many children go, and private enterprise put in soccer fields, et cetera. And the city park that was built by the city of Fruitland, because again, the vision, the vision, and we're only stewards of this property, we all know that, someone else is gonna enjoy the benefits of it. They took and built that park that they have, across from where they used to play the Little League Field. Now the Falcon Football Team, they've got park, they've got land that they use down there now, and that park is probably as big as any park that we have in Wycomico County, all put in by the citizens of Fruitland. There's still land in that area, and I make that suggestion, very close to these same, this same park, grow soybeans and corn, it could be acquired. And think about this, the vision that these people had, they had one school, then another school, now they have three schools there. I won't get to see it, but I'm sure there are young people sitting in this room that will see one day when there's a Fruitland High School. Vision, and it's your decision, your vision, what change are you gonna leave? It's important, and as a young man said over here, and I say that as a young man, everybody's younger than I am, they'd certainly like to have water in California, the Colorado River can't supply enough of it, the Midwest is here. We have the Paleo Channel here, and I think of, if Pete Cooper was here tonight, there would be no question as to what the decision was gonna be, because he fought so hard to protect that water supply that we have. And if we wanted to, which we don't want to, we don't wanna bring that bottle industry in here that's gonna take and pump the water out of the Paleo Channel, I'm sure there'd be, we could have it here bottled water. But anyway, your decision, I hope you have the vision to say, "I'm concerned what my legacy is gonna be on this council." Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, citizens.
My name's Matt Masarello, I'm the state's attorney for Wycomico County, also a husband and father of two boys, Jonathan and Luke, who are probably home watching. Here tonight, I'm not here to quarrel with anybody, but I do wanna give you information so that you can make the best decision possible. I ran into a juror before I left work today, finished up about maybe 6:30, 6:40, and the juror said to me, after we dealt with a lot, said, "How do you do this? How do you depressurize after seeing all this bad stuff?" And without even thinking, I just said, "I get outdoors, that's my thing, that's how I depressurize, that's how I get rid of the stress of the day, the evil that I see in this world." And one of the things that we do, Mr. President, is we go to that park and we mountain bike. My son Jonathan, my son Luke, you know them, the rest of the boys that they hang out with, we bring them to the park and they mountain bike. In fact, one of the boys liked it so much that last year, he had his birthday in that park, took all the bikes to the park, and we had his birthday celebration, spent about three hours, my wife documented it with the camera. So I just wanna let you know, you know, there's a lot of people using that park. Also, Mr. Hannan stole my thunder, I felt moved coming here tonight, because I was a friend of Pete Cooper's. I spent about 10 years with him, when I got to Salisbury, he put me under his wing at the Rotary Club, I learned a lot about his discovery of the Paleo Channel... that he would give the most eloquent speech to you convincing you not to do it. Again, I understand the economic impact that this could have. I also want to leave you with one other question, just something that I don't know that anyone's brought up yet. I'm a dad. I travel with the Falcons program. We go all over the states, or all over, actually, the East Coast to these fields. One thing that lures us to the fields is ingress and egress and the ease of access to the fields. If you're bottlenecked, I don't know if anyone's really studied the impact on ingress and egress and how that affects parents and their willingness to come. But it seems pretty tight in that area, in that corridor right there. It's just a question that I throw out to you. Because parents are really concerned about ingress and egress and just the ease of getting to the fields. That's why we go to some of these places away in Pennsylvania, because they just have fields and fields and fields, and then they have parking adequate to handle the flow. So just something to consider. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Masarello. Okay, is there anyone else out in the hallway who would like to be heard? Anyone down the stairs?
Well, thank you for this opportunity. This is a good discussion. I'd like to emphasize two points, I think. The first one being probably the most important, that we're talking about removing something that is irreplaceable, priceless. So I know you're not taking it lightly, and I think that we really need to consider that weighed in with the economic value of putting the fields in. The other thing is that while this brings a lot of tax money, helps everybody here, helps the restaurant and hotel industries, that's wonderful. What I'd really like to see is a focus on jobs that, jobs that aren't service sector jobs. I mean, we're very lucky, living near a resort town, we have that draw. We're always going to, that's always going to be a big part of our economy. But I think that higher-paying jobs is something we need to really look at going forward to... That's going to increase tax revenue as well, income taxes and state income taxes, county income taxes. That's going to increase people's ability to spend money that live here. And I just think that's really important to consider as well. Thanks for the discussion.
Going once, going twice? Is there anyone else? Okay. One more?
I know what you're all thinking. Oh, come on! We're almost there, almost to the end. But I'd like to say that these extra minutes spent discussing this decision that affects the future of the city are important minutes that aren't wasted. My name is Maggie Cummings. I'm a student at Salisbury University. And over the past three years, I've come to love the city and the people who live and work here. And after I graduate, I continue, I would hope to continue to enjoy the city. I'm speaking tonight not to convince you to pick a side, but to offer a solution that will honor both those for the expansion site, as well as those for speaking for the forest. My minor is geographic information systems, and one of my final projects was to take some issue that we have an interest in and incorporate our GIS knowledge to find a solution. Seeing as my major is environmental studies, this decision at hand is of interest to me. Through this GIS class, I've assessed and located three alternative expansion areas. These three alternative sites were based on certain attributes such as proximity to existing site, land that is already suitable for sporting fields, and as close to 35 acres as possible. So there are alternative sites that satisfy the complex needs. The question is, will you use the technical resources like GIS, as well as experts in the field of hydrology, ornithology, biology, ecology, and many others, in making the most appropriate decision for the residents of Salisbury? Thank you.
Do we have to pay to get the three?
It counts the answer to the question.
Contributions accepted.
Just wait for the paper.
Is there anyone else? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we will move on to the resolution itself, which is Resolution Number 2544, to declare a surplus and approve the gift of the property in question to the county. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2544? Hearing none, the item dies. I would like to take, we will take a five-minute break, but before that, I'll offer an opportunity. If counsel has anything to say, feel free. At this time, Mr. Spees?
Yes. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all of you who contacted me about this issue. It's a hot burner, and I'm glad that we came to where we came. This parcel was a gift. The value of the gift in terms of commercial applications and income and revenue are measurable, but they can be replicated elsewhere. In fact, there are parcels that are nearly adjacent to the current parcel that can be used. But the gift in its unspoiled state, it's immeasurable. We cannot replicate it. It's here. Once we take it away, it's gone. That's the end of it. I want to make a comment about, you know, the MDE, the Maryland Department of the Environment, who sort of vetted this plan and said that, you know, and gave us guidelines to stick with. Well, we've had some bad times with the MDE. If many of you recall, the Maryland Department of the Environment also vetted the wastewater treatment plant. And that wastewater treatment plant is costing us $145 million, something that we're going to be paying off over the next 60 years or so. It's my intention to take this piece, this parcel, and I've talked with Planning and Zoning about it, to take this parcel and put it in a zoning category that in perpetuity cannot be touched. But the thing is, with planning and zoning, or with zoning, that can always be changed. What I want to see happen is that this be put in perpetuity through the help of a nonprofit, perhaps. But in any case, this land should stay the way it is and turn into not just a mature forest, but an old-growth forest. It should be with us forever.
Yeah. Someone had mentioned before, I think it was Tony Nichols, said he's got people he knows on this side, and he has people that he knows on this side. Well, I have people on that side, and I have people on this side. So I'm in the same boat. And I don't think, from my perspective, and I may be naive, but I don't think it's a question of either-or. I think it's a question of both. And I think that we can find a way to have our cake and eat it too. And I think, and I was a very, very good friend of Pete Cooper, and I can remember our discussions about the Paleo Channel. And that never leaves the back of my mind. So I am, that's why I voted not to make an amendment, I mean, a motion. And I think we both win. But I want the softball fields. Because the softball fields are an economic boost to a very, very poor economy that we're in right now. And I also want to thank the man, the young man at the end, who said, "We cannot survive in this location as a purely service industry. We need to bring manufacturing jobs and higher-paying jobs so that we can attract the students that are graduating from university and find high enough paying jobs for them to stay here, grow and raise their families." And I think we can have our cake and eat it too, and I hope that we can find a way of doing that.
Mr. Heath and I have got some psychic power going here because I have written down, this is not an either-or proposition. I love cake, and we can have our cake and eat it too. And the frosting with it. There is a lot of cleared land already that we can move those fields. We can even do it in very close proximity. So they are in some, altogether as in some of the other places that Mr. Masarello talked about. And we can improve our ingress and egress, another important factor that we talked about when we first started talking about this. I'll go one step further, or maybe this is what Mr. Spees was alluding to. I'd like to see us put this land in a land trust. I think that that's where it belongs. I heard a couple of comments about the ball fields being the best use for this land. If you were going to do something else with it, is my qualifier for that. I think what we have now is the best use for this land. Forever. And we can't move it. We can move the ball fields that are there to another location, put them all together if we need to. But I think there's an even easier solution than that. And for what it would cost to cut down those trees, we can probably buy one of those cleared lots, or plots nearby. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I'm historian by heart, and I have a problem of, always had a problem of tearing things down. I'm just now getting over the Salisbury High issue when they tore my high school down. That was traumatic for me. And we're getting ready to celebrate our 50th class reunion. I, this was a learning experience for me because I was unaware of white trails and all that, because I'm not an outdoor person, per se. But all the emails that I had received, and I met with some people, and I was educated on the importance of the forest. And you have something that's over hundreds of years old. You do not destroy it. You try to make it better. You make the trails better. And as Mr. Dean said, we have worked to work with them to clear these trails out and build a partnership with them. Because as my motto says, building partnerships for positive change is what I'm about. And I think although I'm not a biker or a hiker, you work with those people who do that, because that's their thing. My son is just, he's going to participate in his second seagull century this October. So he likes biking. But as I said, this has been a learning experience for me, to know the importance of the forest. And then I also look at the development years and years ago for Sassafras, where we tore all those trees down, and the lots are still there empty. So we did not use the intentions of the lots, but they're still staying there. Then someone else said Wycomico, not knocking Wycomico County Parks and Recreation, but we just had something about our children in the community and curfews and everything. And all we heard, the children did not have anything to do. Well, the kids that are doing something, it costs so much money to participate in parks and recreation activities that where the children, we want to call them at risk, I think everybody's at risk, but the kids or the disadvantaged kids cannot participate in Little League, cannot participate in soccer, because there's a heavy cost to that. Their parents cannot afford to travel with their children. So if it's any way, this brings light that we do some free activities through the parks and recreation. I think I see some, the acting director here, and I see John here, and the other gentleman left. We need to look into that, to give our kids something to do that doesn't have a cost to it. So again, I appreciate the learning experience because every day when you're doing this job, you learn something. And this is something I learned, and I appreciate the education. And I do not want to see, and I agree with Councilwoman Mitchell, that we need to put this in a land trust where it won't be touched again. And also, I even suggested to her, we need to find other lands or other forests that needs to be put, maybe a study can be done for free, because I don't want to pay for anything. But, and see, other forests, for the people that do the studies, like this book here, can put something together. There might be other forests in the community, in the county, that should not be touched. And we put it all in one big...
Well, Shaney and I have had that psychic moment just a couple seconds ago, which I'm glad you were all here for it. I just want to say that the Friends of the Forest, it is a wonderful victory for you But there are several people in the room who said, "We still have this issue at hand." And though I'd like to celebrate with you, I will in spirit. There are parcels out there that can be bought. But the county council is going to need you to show up at their meetings when it comes time to spend that money to show your support for moving it someplace else. So I say to you, your advocacy doesn't end tonight. You go and you have your party, you go up there, and we get spiritual, as we're going to do, up at the forest. But when John Cannon says, "I found a parcel," and Tom Stevens and I are sitting here, and I was like, "The old mall property, gonna do anything to get rid of that rubble pile." Eight million dollars is what the price tag is on that piece of land. So I say to you, I want you to have your fun tonight, but when John Cannon and Jake Day and Jim Irtin in the Chamber of Commerce call and say, "We have a piece of land that needs to be used for this," every single solitary one of you has got to show up and give people cover, because there are people out there who do not want to spend any tax dollars on anything. Ask Matt Drew what they don't want to spend tax dollars on, Matt. You've got to show up and give your support to the people who would fund another parcel to do these softball fields on. It's easy to say, and with all due respect to the two council people who said it, to have your cake and eat it too, but the cake costs. So I say to you this evening, all of you that have won this wonderful victory, I am proud of you, but if we're going to stand up as a community, we need to be right there with the Wycomico County Council when it's time to spend money to do those fields like they need to be done here. Thank you.
And just some final thoughts. And I wasn't even going to get into this, but I mean, since you brought it up, and I'm glad you did.
And Jake and I had a psychic moment there.
Well, we've had a discussion about trails this evening. We've had a discussion about a number of things, but we've had a discussion about trails. I also know that there was a recent conversation about trails in the county, and that you were pressured at the county council level not to support a trail project. And I think it's important that we be factual and honest as citizens when we're going to talk about projects that come before our elected officials. And so, when Mayor Irtin talks about providing cover, it's about being there and being honest. And there was a lot of dishonesty in your meeting that was pushed at you, and it was so unfortunate. And I'm sorry that that happened to you, the county council. And it happens in lots of situations. You know, trails bring crime, trails bring, you know, criminals. I don't think we've seen many criminals here tonight. And they don't. I don't know, maybe we have. But I think it's worth mentioning that trails increase the value of the property they pass. The trails are used by everyone and anyone. And if there's any type of trail that brings crime, it's the paved ones. You know, it's our streets. And that's unfortunate, but that's just the facts. So first of all, I want to announce my jobs plan. I'm going to hire every single one of you who spoke tonight as part of our marketing team, because you recognize the values of this community, whether it's our ability to welcome people who want to play softball in our community, whether it's our incredible locally-owned restaurants, whether it's our tourism and parks and recreation teams, or whether it's our forests and our trails and our bike lanes. But I think it's pretty incredible what we've heard this evening. And I think everybody at this table is ready to do that. It was mentioned that cutting down trees and building ball fields in their places is the least disruptive way to use this land, with the exception, let's remember, of what's there currently. And I do think we can, we can do both. You know, as, the question was asked, what are the alternatives? I think we've seen some. You know, we see a couple alternatives up here, but there have been other alternatives discussed tonight, and yes, I would love to CSU's, the, the old mall property in some way. So, most importantly, we've talked about a lot of very important things to our community tonight, the importance of tourism, the importance of jobs, the importance of water, the importance of recreation and quality of life, but one thing we're not talking about, and I heard, you know, I heard, I think, twice this evening about why are we even talking about this, the importance of civil discourse. Community that talks about challenging things together in a civil way is a community that is going places together. I believe when we can get into a room like this and talk as neighbors, as friends, as coworkers, as colleagues, as patrons, we can go places together, better places. I believe we're on, on our way there. So, in closing, before we move on to those more exciting things we're going to talk about tonight, and before our five-minute break, I'll just say that I think several of you, Trent Swanson and Gabe Metticoe, I think you've proven yourselves the Jamie Heaters of Naylor Mill Park, and I don't know of a higher compliment.